The regular scheduled meeting for the Town of Southern Shores Council is in session for September 3rd. Before I go further with the meeting, I just want to let you know that the mayor is not with us today because he's recuperating from an illness and for a change, he's listening to his doctor and resting and taking care of it. So, would you all join me then in the pledge to allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the eye of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, in our moment of silence, in addition to thinking about Hal and wishing him well, I also like us to think about Richard Johnson. I think most of you know by now, he was a long-term member of the Dare County Board of Commissioners and he passed away last Thursday. He was only 59 years old. He spent a lot of time and did a lot of things for our community and just ask you to please remember him. Thank you. Gentlemen, you have the agenda in front of you. Does anybody have any comments or changes or...
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, staff reports. Mr. Weskett, town planner?
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. I have a brief report for you tonight for the month of August. There were six zoning permits issued, 23 building permits issued, which consisted of one new single-family dwelling, five additions, three remodels, and 13 others. There were 77 building inspections conducted at 43 job sites. There are currently nine single-family dwellings and one bank under construction and the total amount of fees collected in August was $4,719. Any questions?
Any questions? No. Thank you, Wes.
Thank you.
Chief Cole?
The police report for August 2013. As you can see, we officers responded to 1,040 calls for service. Some of those breakdowns consisted of 256 business checks, 123 residence checks. We responded to 11 different mutual aids to other agencies, 17 traffic direct, 30 suspicious condition calls for service. We responded to two, nine alarms. Officers conducted 138 traffic stops and another 88, I'm sorry, 80 extra patrols. Some of the breakdowns we had for incidents, which are actually crimes that were investigated and reported, we had 33. As you can see off to the side, that's a breakdown of some of the highlights of them. Officers also made 11 criminal arrests. They handed out 63 citations, another 70 warning citations, and our community resource officer, excuse me, handed out 121 ordinance violations. And officers responded to six motor vehicle accidents for the year. Just a couple of other things I'd like to add. The community resource officer is done for the year. I will say that he exceeded our expectations. He was a true asset to the police department. His demeanor was excellent. We had nothing but good comments from people that he would hand a $50 ticket to. And that...
That says a lot.
I've never had that happen. So, that goes a long way. He is actually, he started two weeks ago in the basic police academy and we hope that he does well. And the other thing, this is the first week of school and so far, with the exception of the first day where I think every parent drove in separate vehicles to take their kids to school, things have worked out pretty well. Any questions? Thank you.
Any questions? The town manager pointed out to me, he asked me if I had approved the minutes and I said yes, we did because I saw approval of and approval of and what we approved was the agenda. So gentlemen, could we back up one step and under the consent agenda, we have the minutes for August the 20th?
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Chief Harvey?
The fire report for the month of August, we had 51 total calls, of which three were fires, 30 were rescues, first responder medical, four hazardous conditions, one good, four good intent calls, and 10 false alarms. An unusually unusual rise in false alarms in the month of August is what I'm trying to say. This compares to 71 total calls for the similar period last year.
Wow.
So, business is down.
Yes, good.
Any questions?
Any questions? Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the reports of the boards. The planning board, Sam?
Nothing to report, Sam.
All right, thank you. The Southern Shores Civic Association, Ross?
Mayor Pro Tem, town council members, town manager. In an attempt to clarify the confusion regarding construction of a cell tower in Southern Shores on SSCA property, I've handed you an advanced copy of the response that will be sent to the SSCA membership in an email blast and also in the next issue of the Shoreline newsletter. In a recent article published by the Outer Banks Voice, it pictured a cell tower with external antennas located in Nag's Head, which is in no way representative of the cell tower approved by the Southern Shores Civic Association membership. The lease agreement between the SSCA and AT&amp;T stipulates that the, that a portion of Triangle Park shall be leased for placement of a white flagpole cell tower up to 130 foot tall, where all antennas and cables would be located inside the pole, except for a small antenna dedicated to local police and fire use. The pole will be surrounded by a block wall 10 foot tall, landscape quality block in a natural earth tone color. The town ordinance requires landscaping around the external sides of all the walls, excluding the gate, will be met. In October of 2010, the SSCA membership voted, the SSCA membership voted with 92% in favor of leasing a portion of Triangle Park to AT&amp;T for the construction of a stealth flagpole style cell tower. After a delay due to a merger talk between AT&amp;T and T-Mobile, the lease agreement between New Singular Wireless, AT&amp;T Mobility Corporation, and the SSCA was signed by AT&amp;T and the SSCA on June the 13th, 2013. AT&amp;T filed the memorandum of lease agreement with Dare County on July the 22nd, 2013. Now, this per the wireless site specialist, all paperwork for construction for a cell tower at Triangle Park is ready to be submitted to the Town of Southern Shores. He will be filing for a conditional use permit with the town prior to September the 20th, which is the deadline to make the October Town Planning Board agenda. It is our understanding, once the planning board has received and reviewed AT&amp;T's request for a conditional use permit, the planning board will make its recommendation to town council to issue or not issue a permit. The final decision to allow AT&amp;T to construct a flagpole style cell tower at Triangle Park will be made by Southern Shores Town Council. I welcome and solicit any comments, corrections, or additions that town council and the town manager would like to make to this message.
Any comments, questions?
Thank you very much.
Obviously, he likes it.
All right, good.
Good, thank you very much, Ross. Appreciate it. Okay, the Chickahawke Property Owners Association, Leo?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, board, town manager. I don't have the same message to deliver. It was sort of a quiet month until the last day or two and we had a little discussion on with one resident over in Gravy Pond regarding mowing, which Peter and I have discussed and I have contacted those people to indicate that CPOA does not mow right-of-way over on Gravy Pond. As some of you may know, we do do some mowing and it's basically the, where the sidewalks are, the CPOA's common properties, and that's pretty much it. Matter of fact, we mow where the sidewalks are, but we, like on Spindrift, where the walk comes up there, we mow on the west side where the sidewalk is, but we don't mow on the east side where the right-of-way is. And Peter and I think, well, I'm going to bring this up to the board, our board Thursday night as our meeting. It's tough to find where there was any definition of how that all started and we need to get a little more formalized understanding of who mows what. So that was our challenge this week. The other part is, there is the surf contest coming up here, which we have agreed, CPOA has, to allow our parking lot to be used for that purpose as well. The other item is our semi-annual meeting, which is September 28th. It's at, starts at 3:00. It'll be a business meeting for about an hour, maybe less, depending on whoever wants to talk. And then we'll be having a barbecue served by Kelly's and it runs from about 4:00 to 7:00 at that, at that point in time. I'll be inviting anybody, I'll send a general invite to everybody on the board. If any of you are on the council, I should say, if any of you all want to attend, I would hope, if Hal can't make it, Jody, maybe you can, or somebody to make some comments to the membership that'll be attending. Peter, don't know if you'll make it, but if you can all put it on your schedule, September 28th.
You didn't mention where?
Trinity Park at the Pavilion.
Okay.
And if it rains real bad, the weather's bad, I've already checked with Sheila, we'll be, we'll move over here.
I thought you were going to talk to, check with Sheila to turn off the rain.
Well, I know she does a lot of things, but I don't think she has control of that.
Right, very good.
If, any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, this evening is a scheduled public hearing for the ZTA 1305 temporary uses. Mr. Manager, do you want the town planner to cover the...
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Pro Tem, lead planner's ready to give the, the actual staff report on it and then defer questions to the town attorney and town manager if he can't answer.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Tonight, you have before use ZTA 13-05, which is a requested action from town staff to amend the town zoning ordinance regarding section 36-168 temporary uses. Staff's analysis, town staff finds that the temporary use of land by the town or its agents to support the construction, repair, replacement, and maintenance of town-owned, leased, operated, or maintained facilities, which include but are not limited to buildings, streets, utilities, beach accesses, multi-use paths, and canals, is a reasonable and appropriate use of land in all zoning districts within the town. As a result of this finding, town staff is proposing to amend section 36-168 by adding language to enable the town to periodically perform construction, repair, replacement, and maintenance of town-owned, leased, operated, or maintained facilities, which include but are not limited to buildings, streets, utilities, beach accesses, multi-use paths, and canals. Town staff proposes to add the following language to 36-168. Within any zoning district, the use of land by the town or its agents to support the construction, repair, replacement, renovation, remodel, rehabilitation, and maintenance of town-owned, leased, operated, or maintained facilities, which include but not, are not limited to buildings, streets, utilities, beach accesses, multi-use paths, and canals, for a temporary period which reasonably corresponds to the duration of the project. The proposed language would be added to the current list of temporary uses, which are considered permitted uses in all zoning districts. Town staff's recommendation is that the application is consistent with the town's currently adopted land use plan, recommends approval of the ZTA, and the town planning board did vote to recommend approval of the proposed amendment 5 to 1 at their last planning board meeting. And if there are any questions, myself or the town manager, town attorney can try to answer those for you at this time.
Since this is a public hearing, do we have anybody signed up to, for any public comments?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Questions, anybody?
No.
We'll close, officially close. Okay, excuse me, I have to officially open it. This is a public hearing for this zone and do we have any applicants?
I don't see anyone signed up, Mayor Pro Tem.
Right.
No, ma'am.
Okay. Then we'll close the public hearing at this time. Counsel, what are your wishes?
I move that we approve the ZTA 13-05 temporary uses.
I'll second.
Okay, we have moved and seconded. Does anybody have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Kerry, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is the general public comments section. Has anybody signed up for general public comments? Okay, thank you. Well, old business. As you recall, the mayor put on the agenda some time ago for us to review the rules of procedure for town council. And we discussed it at last meeting and asked that comments be sent to him from, from all of you folks. And I have not, from what I understand, we have not had any responses from anybody at this point. Do you have any other comments that you'd want to make at this point in time? Do you have things that you looked at? I left with each of you some, some comments that, the one that's marked a preamble is the one that the mayor and I have been discussing for some time. And what this has to do with is, the rules of procedures, you know, is the way the town council operates. And it also is a very valuable tool for the public, it's a public document, and it also is a very good tool for orientation for new peoples becoming onto the, to the council. But one of the things that we felt was missing was the explanation of the town council manager type of government. So the preamble was put together as to be like the opening statement for the, for the rules. Have you all had a chance to read it? Do you have any questions or concerns or is there any discussion on that one page?
On the preamble.
On the preamble. Let me ask one question. Excuse me. Do we need to, do these, handle these separately from the motion point of view?
In terms of each of the changes, I mean, does everyone have everything in front of them?
Yes. Or can we do these both together?
My usual answer on doing things together or separately is, it depends on whether or not you think it will pass if done together.
Let's just make it easy.
If you think it will pass done together, then a, then a motion to do it all at one time is appropriate. If not, then I would do it piece by piece.
We'll just let the clerk have to do a few extra typing and we'll... Do we have a motion to approve the preamble?
I'll move if we accept the preamble as written.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The other two are comments that I, I think I mentioned briefly to you when we reviewed the rules at the last meeting. And one had to do with the fact that the instructions that were listed under the appointments section were instructions that really almost came out of the rules book presented by the government, Institute of Government. And it's not always followed. So my concern was if we had something that was a little bit simpler and applied to us would make a lot more sense. So this, what I proposed was, was what we put there under number four in red. When advised of potential vacancies on boards and committees, the council will direct the town manager to seek applications from interested residents of the town. The slate of applicants will be presented to the council for discussion and a vote. And the key for even bringing that in is because we do have an application process for this thing and getting, the way it was worded before didn't mention applications, it didn't go the way we follow it. So, comments?
I like the idea of simplifying that section. I wonder if we could change, and maybe it's not necessary, but it's sort of a philosophical change, where it says be presented to the council for discussion and a vote. I would prefer to see be presented to the council for nomination and a vote. There might be a slate that does not, by the council standards or whatever, a member of that slate or a slate that does not seem to be appropriate.
Okay, I mean, if it's, if there's a way to make it clear, to me, the vote took care of that because if you didn't like something that's on there, you don't vote for it. But I, you know, obviously I wrote, so...
Yeah, you know, the...
It makes sense to me.
In this case, it's sort of like the slate of applicants will be presented to the council for discussion and a vote.
A list of applicants?
That sounds to me like that, that is the selections that will be made.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Can we say a list of applicants?
Yeah.
And say what you wanted to say again.
Just substitute for discussion, the, to be presented to the council for nomination and a vote.
Is there any problems with that from your point of view? Okay, I have no problem with that.
How about we just put down nomination, discussion, and a vote? Solve that whole problem.
That's exactly, they're different sets. Yeah. Okay, we'll do that.
And we just change slate to list and we solve that problem.
Okay, we'll take, we'll change slate to list and we'll put council for nomination, discussion, and a vote. Okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Down below, under the public address to the council, under section 15, we talk about the, what the public comments are, the regular meetings, and the fact that the mayor can set a time limit. The one thing we do that we've not documented is that the council will take under advisement the comments made by a member of the public, but will not respond during this period. Just wanted to make it clear for everybody.
So is this addition to that first paragraph?
Yes, yes. So the first paragraph would stand, we're just saying documenting what we do.
Right.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay. So if there's no further discussion on it, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the revisions to section 14 and section 15 as we've discussed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is one that came up, we, last week, we had the report from Sam that said who the chairman, the planning board officers were. And correct me if I'm wrong, Sam, it's Sam Williams as chairman and Mike Flores as vice chairman. But we didn't officially pass a motion to approve that.
No, we didn't.
Right. Could I have a motion for us to do that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good, thank you. Did I miss anything?
Please say.
Okay, then it's your turn.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council. Have a short report tonight, but I did want to report to you that the street repair contract with Barn Hill will begin, they will, excuse me, they will begin next week with the repairs. They were out scouting today and confirming each one on the contract with our consultant engineer, and they're scheduled to actually start that next week. So we'll be seeing activity all over town. It won't be one pothole at a time. They will be done in a systematic fashion of removal and then fill and then come back and doing the final paving. So it'll be either a two or three-step process.
And that means a two or three-step process for all of the repairs?
Yes, ma'am.
Good, okay, thank you.
Right. And remember, it's 13 major repairs that we have on that capital list. The other two, we're still working on to get those out for bid. And we're also working on the rebuilds to get those out for bid as well as we speak. I did want to report to you on the canal project, phase two of the project. We did receive the modification to the town's capital major permit. With that, we have notified the contractor, Salmon Contract Incorporated, excuse me, Salmon Dredging Incorporated, that we need to have a pre-dredging conference and, with the state and the town and the contractor. So we will be doing that in the next 10 days and all indications are that the dredger is seeking to mobilize approximately the last week of September. They're ready to go, but they don't have to have that much done on-site ahead of them moving the actual equipment. And just confirming now, we still haven't, of course, we haven't had the pre-construction conference yet, but the plan still is for him, he plans to start on the northern sites first and move to the south. And at that point, hopefully I'll have some more details when we meet with him prior to, to construction beginning in the 1st of October. And I'll keep the council informed, of course, on every step of the way as we start up because I know there'll be a lot happening between two, between meetings. Happy to report too, today we set, set some sporting events for the town for the next year. As Mr. Holland said, the surfing tournament will be this Saturday and this is the fifth annual event that has been held in the town by this nonprofit group and it is a charity event. The town is one of the sponsors this year. We're actually helping with some infrastructure items and some parking as well. The surf, the tournament starts at 8:00 on Saturday morning at the Chickahawke Beach Access. I was talking with the board tonight before the meeting and all of the heats are full. They anticipate a big crowd being here, so it should be very exciting. Also, on December 21, Run Cations will be sponsoring a 10K, 5K, and kids' run in Southern Shores as part of the, in cooperation with the tourist bureau's effort to get events happening around Christmas time. So that'll be December 21. The event will be totally in our town. It will be that Saturday morning at 8:00, December 21. And it'll make the loop up Duck Road, East Dogwood, and back down South Dogwood, back to the shopping center and marketplace. So that'll be a 10K run and there'll be a 5K component as well. So we'll be helping promote that. Also, next year, again, June the 5th, a long way away, but we'll be having the National Run Day run for the Outer Banks here in Southern Shores as well. So we're excited about all those events coming up. That's my report for tonight. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions that any council member has.
Yes, Peter, I have one question about the canal dredging. Have we, or do we have plans in effect to notify the boat owners to start clearing the canals?
We, we do. Well, actually, we have verbally started telling some that they're, about the window time period, but that is a good point. We have not formally said anything yet because we don't know more of a finite window other than October 1, February 15. The silk, I'm informed that the silt screens will be up at some point within that time period, but I'm just not quite sure exactly when they'll go up. And hopefully by having this pre-construction conference, we'll be able to get a better window. But thank you for bringing that up because the public does need to know, wants the silt screens to go down unless it's an emergency and we get public works crew out there in the middle of the night to lower one or raise one, whichever, a boat is not going to be able to travel across them. So, but I just can't...
And they need to be out of the way.
They need to be either, they're going to either be moored the whole time or they need to be out of here if they want to use, use the boats. And that's true for the... And that's true for the smaller canals that empty into the bay as well, into, yeah, King Eye Bay as well. We just don't have a window, but to be ready, when those silt curtains go down, they will be trapped in the canals if they're not out. And a good worst-case scenario is October 15 to February, I mean, excuse me, October 1 to February 15. We just, hopefully, we'll be able to finalize that a little bit better.
Any other questions? Thank you. Town attorney?
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I don't have anything else to report. Thank you.
Thank you. I've already given you the report on the mayor, and I tell you that he is doing well, and we appreciate the fact that he's taking care of himself. Council members? Larry?
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I have another, thank you.
Nothing.
I have nothing, thank you.
My goodness gracious. Oh, I was just given a note just to remind everybody that the next bulk trash day will be Friday, October 11, and you'll see more of that in the town email and the newsletters as it goes out, but just start your plans around that date. Okay, thank you, everybody. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.